Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 9th Lebanon City Council meeting. Apologize for the slight delay. That meeting went a little longer than we thought it would. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. Move on to the roll call members. Madam Kirk will call the roll.
Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Coates.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilman Fleming.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, Council, move on to the approval of amendments from our previous meeting. Any amendments, edits, discussion of our previous meeting's minutes? We motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second. All the servants say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, minutes from our previous meeting are approved. With Council's consent, I would like to shift around the agenda a little bit. I want to move the resolutions 2018 and, or 2018-28 and Resolution 2018-29 to the first. Do I have consent in Council?
Depends.
Consent? Okay. Molly from the Boone County ABC, will you come forward, please?
Good evening, Council. Molly Whitehead, Boone County Economic Development Corporation, here before you tonight for an incentive request on behalf of Festool. And you'll see the two legal entities are TTS Real Estate, that's of course the real property or the building, and TTS Tool Technical Systems North America, which is the owner of the personal property. So Festool has been a longtime tenant in the Lebanon Business Park, expanded, doubled their capacity a year or two ago, and they continue to just see a great amount of growth and have interest in continuing to grow in Lebanon. So what they are working on right now is a potential expansion of up to 80,000 square feet. That would be a continuation of the operations that they have there now, which is headquarters, logistics and distribution, some assembly as well. They currently employ a little over 100 people, and they anticipate with this expansion up to 65 new jobs, average wages over $25 an hour, and that's exclusive of benefits. They do offer a benefits package to their employees hourly and salary as well. This expansion's expected to have a capital investment of real property around 8.9 million and personal property $440,000, and that's by 2020. We're recommending that you consider a non-traditional abatement schedule for Festool. For TTS Real Estate, the real property tax abatement is six-year, real property abatement year one at 100%, year two at 85%, years three through five at 75%, and year six at 50%. And then a personal property tax abatement for TTS Tool Technical Systems North America, it's estimated to save them around $12,000, and the real property, by the way, around $390,000. Years one through six of personal property abatement at 100% each of those years. By doing this shortened schedule, it allows you, especially in the real property, to get a little more money back quicker. And then, of course, in year seven through 10, the company would be paying 100% of their property taxes back to the city. So based on the information we received from the company and based on very conservative estimates, we anticipate benefits to Lebanon and to Boone County over a 10-year period, a $450,000 real property tax levy, $6,000 in personal property levy, and about $140,000 in local income taxes we're estimating to be generated from these potential jobs. It's only assuming 20% are Boone County residents. We'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Any questions from Council from Molly?
No, sir.
I will say, I think Festool's been a great partner for the city of Lebanon. It's one of our few companies that actually have a U.S. headquarters here in our community. So I know the real property was a little, maybe a little more aggressive, but I do think it's something we want to show the companies that are successful here. We want them to expand and continue their partnership with the city of Lebanon. So I think it's a great opportunity for them to expand. I think they're going to be, continue to be a great employer for our community. Any other comments from Council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning the, this? Okay, not here for this one. Okay. Rob, would you mind reading Resolution 2018-28?
Mayor, Council, thank you. This is regarding a certain real property tax abatement deduction for TTS Real Estate as Ms. Whitehead indicated. And this council has the right and opportunity to debate the payment of real property taxes for the real estate located within the area declared by the council to be an economic revitalization area and also debate personal property taxes. The council may find a particular area within the jurisdiction of the city as an economic revitalization area and may by resolution declare such area an economic revitalization area. This council adopted by Resolution 2018-17 the declaratory resolution on May 14th, 2018, declaring pursuant to the Act a certain area located within the corporate boundaries of the city comprising approximately 23 acres described on Exhibit A attached to this resolution and also with the map on Exhibit B as an economic revitalization area. The council, after following all the applicable procedures, took final action adopting Resolution 2018-20, the confirmatory resolution, on May 29th, whereby this council confirmed the declaratory resolution and established an economic revitalization area. TTS Real Estate, the applicant, as Ms. Whitehead indicated, has filed with this council a statement of benefit, real estate improvements, known as SB1, and that's attached to this resolution as Exhibit C, which describes the proposed project to be installed by the applicant. Again, this project includes new construction of approximately 79,198 square foot warehouse. This council, by this resolution, has reviewed the form SB1. The improvement of the area will be a public utility and will be to the benefit and the welfare of the citizens and taxpayers of the city. And this motion is resolved that it, project will be located within the area and confirmed as an economic revitalization area pursuant to the Act. The applicant is to receive real property tax abatement as described below. The applicant shall acquire ownership interest in the area from Cody and Broden Smith, and based on the SB1, the council makes the following findings. The estimate of $8,965,941 as the cost of the improvements to be constructed is reasonable for projects of this nature. The estimate hiring of 65 new individuals who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The estimate of $5,758,209 for the aggregate annual salaries of those individuals who will be employed can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed project. The other benefits about which information has been presented to this council are benefits that can reasonably be expected to result from the project, and the totality of the benefits is sufficient to justify the granting of the real estate property tax abatement. Again, as Ms. Whitehead indicated, the proposed abatement, year one, 100%, two, 85%, years three through five, 75%, year six, 50%, and this council shall cause to be filed a copy of this resolution with the Boone County Auditor.
Thank you, Rob. Any further questions now that you've heard the resolution read? Any further discussion, comments from the public? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-28.
I move we approve Resolution 2018-28.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. All the servants say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Resolution 2018-28 passes unanimously. And would you mind reading 2018-29 now?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Resolution 2018-29 contains certain personal property tax abatement for TTS Tool Technical Systems North America LP. Again, pursuant to the Act, the council may find within a particular area that economic revitalization area may by, may by adoption of a resolution declare it to be an economic revitalization area. And again, this council, on May 14th, approved by declaratory resolution 2018-17, the boundaries that are located within Exhibit A to this resolution and also as described on the map as Exhibit B to be an economic revitalization area. After taking all applicable procedures, the council took final action by adopting Resolution 2018-20, which again is the confirmatory resolution on May 29th. TTS Tool Technical Systems North America, the applicant, has filed with this council its SB1 for personal property, and that's all attached here on Exhibit C, in order to receive personal property tax abatement. This council has reviewed the SB1, and again, the improvement will be a public utility to the benefit and the welfare of the citizens and taxpayers of the city. This resolution, again, you're finding that the proposed project will be located within the area, which has been confirmed as an economic revitalization area. The SB1 submitted by the applicant is approved, and you make the following findings. The estimate of $446,266 as the cost of new manufacturing equipment to be installed is reasonable for projects of this nature. The estimate of hiring 65 new individuals who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The estimate of $5,758,209 for the aggregate annual salaries of those individuals who will be employed can be reasonably expected to result from this project. And again, the other benefits which have been presented to this council can be reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The personal property tax deductions are hereby approved. Again, they shall be six years from the date of this for 100%. And again, the council shall cause to be filed a copy of this resolution with the Boone County Auditor, and it shall be in full force effect immediately upon its adoption.
Actually, I caught a mistake here. In Section 4, we need to amend, Section 4 orders say six instead of eight. So, okay, caught that. Any further discussion from Council? Any public comment concerning the resolution? Okay. I would need, I need an amendment to amend Section 4 from eight to six.
I motion we update Section 4 to indicate six years as opposed to eight.
Okay. We have a motion to amend in a second.
Second.
John? All the servants say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Resolution's been amended. Would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution as amended.
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution, amended Resolution 2018-29.
We have a motion in a second. All the servants say aye.
Aye.
Yep, those opposed? Okay. Resolution 2018-29 as amended passes unanimously. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. And thank you Festool for expanding our community. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Probably the item everyone's here for tonight now. Go back up here to presentation. So this is the interchange feasibility study results. I believe we have some people here from American Structure Point that want to give the presentation. Unless, Kevin, you want to introduce this to them or? Can I introduce them?
Thank you, Council. I know we've all had a long night. We've got a lot ahead of us, so I'll be brief. We're here tonight to see a presentation from our consultant, American Structure Point, related to the feasibility study that was performed to look at a potential new interchange north of the city, including the closure of the left-hand exit from 52 onto 65 and further left onto Lafayette Avenue. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Executive Vice President from American Structure Point.
Steve Davidson?
Steve. Sorry, your name completely dropped off my memory there. Good evening and thank you. My name's Steve Davidson, Executive Vice President with American Structure Point, and have been involved in the study of this interchange feasibility since its inception. With me is Ryan Hepschman, who's our Traffic Section Manager, who'll actually walk through the presentation. We'll try to keep it brief and then answer any questions you may have on the presentation.
Thanks. Good evening, all. I just want to give you a quick presentation on what we've looked at for this feasibility study and kind of sum it up and, like Steve said, answer any questions you might have. So the reason for this study is to determine the feasibility of adding a new interchange on the north side of the city of Lebanon. That would be roughly in the area that's shown here on the red on the map. The study area for this project is shown here in the shaded region. It's really the north side of the city and a little bit into the county as that exists today, roughly from the US 52 interchange to about six tenths of a mile north of County Road 300 North. The reason for this study is that the city is expecting a very large amount of development to occur in the future in the area shaded in green on the map above. Those areas really have a lack of access to I-65 if they were to develop with the current roadway network. To help improve access to those sites, which would also help spur some development, we were looking at the feasibility of an interchange. Along with that, the city also has another goal of diverting some of the trucks out of downtown. By doing that, State Road 39 could be rerouted out of the downtown area and along through this new interchange to help pull some of that through truck traffic out of the downtown The basis for this study really is that the comprehensive plan that the city has already developed. So the comprehensive plan tells us what the expected land uses are of that undeveloped area that I showed on the previous slide, and from that, we're able to do some trip generation and projections to come up with how many trips are really expected to come from that growth that we will see in the future. Our estimates show from that, though, that we can expect about 43,000 daily trips coming out of that amount of development on the north side of the city alone. It's a pretty sizable amount of traffic that needs access to the interstate and along with other areas. These daily traffic volumes, then, we took and assigned to each one of the three study alternatives that were developed for purposes of this feasibility study. Those three alternatives are shown here. They have a few similarities to them in each instance. A new east-west roadway is created, spanning from US 52 to State Road 39. These alternatives vary a little bit in that some create a new roadway, some use existing alignments. In each case, State Road 39 would be rerouted along the new roadway shown in, shown in the colored lines on the screen. 39 then would follow along I-65 and down to the existing I-65 and 39 interchange on the south side of town. The traffic analysis, comparison of these three alternatives, really showed that there's not a distinguishing characteristic or not, not one that would really fall out as being the best or the worst from these three alternatives. And that you see here from the level of service that we show on the slide. So the level of service really is a grading system that we use A through F of being able to rate the operations and efficiency of intersections throughout the city. So for this study, we took a look at 13 different intersections throughout the city that would be impacted by this new development and also by the proposed roadway improvements of each one of these alignments. And as you see here, all of these intersections are expected to operate at pretty high levels, Level C or better, which we consider to be acceptable for any intersection in the area. To give you a little detail on each of the alternatives, so this is the first alternative or Alternative 1 that we evaluated for the study. This, in this alternative, there's a new east-west roadway constructed north of County Road 300 North. So the east-west roadway shown here spans from US 52 to State Road 39 with, of course, a new diamond interchange at I-65, and it's, passes largely through farmland that's out there today. Alternative 2 constructs a interchange at the, at an intersection, interchange with County Road 300 North, as you see here. In this alternative, 300 North would be upgraded to a four-lane facility to handle traffic flow between US 52 and State Road 39. And then the third alternative, the new east-west roadway connecting to the interchange essentially follows County Road 250 North, makes a little jog to the south to avoid Prairie Creek and a new interchange at that location. 52 again ties into it from the northwest. In all of these alternatives, the existing US 52 interchange with I-65 would be removed. Each of these alternatives were evaluated from a cost perspective using the conceptual designs that I showed on the previous slides. We were able to put some, not only construction dollars to them, but also rough estimates of what we think the right-of-way would cost and also mitigation costs required for mitigating various environmental impacts that they might have. So as you see here, Alternative 2, which would be to upgrade County Road 300 North and construct an interchange there, had the highest cost. The lowest cost based on this was Alternative 3, or replacing the existing US 52 interchange with a full interchange and new alignment along County Road 250 North. Some additional comparisons were done to evaluate not just the cost of these, but also the other impacts that might be out there. As you see here, there's quite a few number of parcels that are impacted, sorry, acres of land acquisition that are required for each one of these alignments. Alternative 1, which is the brand-new east-west roadway north of 300 North, really has one of the, what we consider one of the lower impacts to, from land acquisition, is we really only have two relocations of properties or homes that are needed for that. You also see that we've compared various other things, like the number of bridge structures that are required, how many intersection improvements are needed throughout the study area, how much developable land is really available around that new interchange, and also wetland impacts. One thing that's of concern to INDOT is the number of new net miles that we would be adding to INDOT's system by adding this new interchange and rerouting State Road 39. As you can see here, Alternative 1 provides the lowest net new miles to the INDOT system, so that's a, that's a key distinguishing factor to that one. Again, you have the project costs at the bottom with alternatives, with the lowest alternative being Alternative 3. The conclusion of the study, we really were able to identify that all three of these alternatives are very viable. There really isn't one that stands out as being a front-runner or one that stands out as being completely unfeasible. So we'd recommend that all of these be advanced onto the next step in the process. And those next steps really consist of helping the city to identify funding for these potential alternatives, initiating an interstate access request, which would be needed through the federal highway to grant approval for a new interchange, conducting an NEPA study to evaluate the environmental impacts of each one of these alternatives and help provide a, a, more of a differentiator between the alternatives to determine which one has more impacts or least in the preferred. You know, also advancing this into the actual design stage and then finally into construction, which we anticipate could start as early as 2022 and would take approximately two years, three years for completion. It's the summary of the study as we have it today. I'm happy to answer any questions if you might have them.
Any questions from Council?
So just to clarify, this would, all three of the alternatives evaluated shifting 39 to essentially do a 90-degree turn, correct?
Correct.
And then route onto the interstate and then exit the interstate and continue past the city essentially?
Correct.
Is what 39 would do.
Correct.
So that property from any of the options down through the core of Lebanon, those roads would then be relinquished to the city, I'm assuming, correct?
Correct.
The ones within the city limits?
Everything north of Exit 139?
One thing I'm, and maybe it has to do with what the city takes over, on Alternative 1, which looks to be the longest new stretch of roadway, but INDOT would only be responsible for .25 of that, is that correct?
The .25 miles, that's actually the net change in miles, so that's accounting for additions and subtractions.
Okay.
So there's only...
Oh, okay, I see.
Because they're loose, got it.
Because it shifts, with their nice shifts over him?
Same thing. And as well as US 52, the section 8, US 52, that's south of the connection, that's a little over two miles that would be relinquished as well.
Right. And would the city then take that over? Is that, that's still in county, so?
Yeah, it's not within city limits, so at that point, it would go to whoever the jurisdiction is in that area.
Hey, Steve, I want to confirm that the state of Indiana is going to be the deciding factor of where this goes, and I just want everybody to understand that the city of Lebanon commissioned this study for the sole purpose of giving the state of Indiana some information so that they knew that we were doing some due diligence on this and that the state of Indiana is the driving force behind this interchange because they want to change the Lafayette Avenue exit. And they wanted to for years, and I just want everybody to understand that it's the state of Indiana that's going to do something sometime. We're just out in front of it for several years in front of this project. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Through this study phase, we coordinated with INDOT, with both the Crawfordsville District and Central Office. They had a chance to review all the reports, materials, all the traffic operational data, and yes, as this project would move forward, it would become an INDOT project. They would, they would procure any consultants and move forward with the NEPA studies, the design, as well as the construction of the facilities.
Let's have a hypothetical. Let's say that all 15,000 people in Lebanon said they don't want a new interchange. Would there, would they still build an interchange?
No, I mean, through the NEPA process, INDOT would have public meetings and public hearings, so there would be an opportunity for the public to voice their opinion, but that would obviously be a strong voice for INDOT not to move forward with the project if, if the residents so chose to advocate that way.
So it is possible that public opinion could stop a redoing of an interchange on I-65?
Correct.
But that would be totally through the state of Indiana?
Correct.
And not the Lebanon, city of Lebanon?
Correct.
Okay.
One quick point, I think it's, you know, I've read some of the questions of why is the city of Lebanon doing this? It's not in city limits. As you can tell, this has a drastic impact on traffic and the citizens of Lebanon, right? So it's very important for us to understand what any of these changes are going to do. As I was going through and preparing for some of this, I just went through the Boone County Sheriff's Office does the text alerts, and just in the last 30 days, we've had two accidents at that intersection on I-65. So there's obviously something that's going to be done. What we needed to do as a city is evaluate what are some different options for us as a city and what can we give INDOT as options to move forward.
And because the city, if, you know, tell me if I'm off-base here, because the city chose to participate now, the citizens have information now as opposed to, if the state were doing this all by themselves, it might be two or three years before anybody knew anything about it, and then they would have a slower limit, a lower amount of time to rebut or whatever. Is that correct?
That's correct, and obviously the city's been very proactive in having this material ready and available for INDOT to look at, and it's really, will help them and ultimately in their evaluation of these options. Once we get to, Corey, to one of your, your point as well, INDOT is also planning an expansion project on I-65 from State Road 32 all the way up to 47 that would add another travel lane on there, which will only exacerbate the problems at the US 52 interchange. So, I mean, that, those are additional projects that INDOT has forthcoming that would also impact the traffic operations and safety in that, in that area.
Isn't INDOT's mission is to have a three-lane 65 all the way from La Porte or up north all the way down south, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, you know, you mentioned the cost of construction on this, so I know we don't have $68 million laying around. I know we haven't really talked about much in-depth, but any kind of, maybe just discussion about how this process would work from a funding perspective and where that would go?
Sure. Sure. As NDOT moves forward into their, in their process, obviously the first steps have been taken, you know, looking at a corridor, it matches with the city's comprehensive plan and land use planning. NDOT will look at their federal funding, their state funding, and how they would fund a project like this in their program. They're also applying for already for grants for this project, as well as the added travel lanes projects through Federal Highway Administration's Build Grant Program. If you ever heard about the Tiger Grant Program, where FHWA basically gives, give grants for construction projects, NDOT's already applying for grants in that, in that Build Grant Program, which could fund upwards of $25 million towards this project directly from the, from the federal government.
So this would be our federal gas tax coming back to us?
Correct.
Does the proposed project... The proposed project south at 550, does that impact this at all?
No. I mean, they have, they have different, I'll let Ryan talk about that if you want.
Yeah, that project actually is far enough south that it's out of what's considered to be the influence area of this new interchange, so the federal highway really considers those two separate issues.
Well, man, as far as the state, they're doing that, that's not going, you know, it's not going to get all the money.
No, I mean, they would, they would look at these as separate, completely separate projects.
How does this interface with the county's comprehensive plan in terms of transportation?
The county's plan and the city's plan were developed at the same time, and it falls in line with the county's comprehensive plan.
Okay. I guess my question, I've heard, and this is based on hearsay, not things I've seen, but I was always told that 300 north eventually would be a larger thoroughfare, a main thoroughfare to carry traffic. If, for instance, you know, we endorse Route 1, is that going to seriously negatively impact what the county may be doing 25 or 50 years from now?
I would say no. I mean, essentially what would happen would be that, that route to the north would become that new thoroughfare for the county. They would utilize that even though it's a state route.
I might add, just from, from the past, about, way back in the early 90s, when the county first developed their thoroughfare transportation plan, it was, it was planned back at that time to have, to look at doing a new interchange north of Lebanon, trying to tie in 250, 300 somewhere at also. And then when we, years ago, we started our first city plan, transportation plan, that same thing was in there then as well. So I guess what I want to tell everybody, this is not, was just not decided three months ago to look at this. This was decided years ago that we need to look at something to try to come up with a way to get people to, to think about, if we want to expand the north side, there's another way to get out to the interstate to get you to, because people, to build the interstate or to build a community, people want to live close to an interstate to where they can get out, so they can get somewhere. And I don't know about a lot of you, you'll probably live up on 300, and you'll probably jump over to 52 and, and go down 52 and jump on the interstate. Well, I'm on 250, and I can tell you from my house to get to the interstate through 39 through town or through Whit Road over to 32, it's eight minutes driving the speed limit, and lucky if you don't hit all the stoplights. And it's still eight minutes either direction I go, and you'd be surprised, eight minutes is a long time to figure to try to get somewhere. If I could get somewhere quicker, and the whole thought and the process idea of putting interchange there was for the hospital years ago, was get a route for the hospital that they could get to the interstate, that they could get a patient quicker to Indianapolis than trying to drive through Lebanon. And the idea was either 250 or 300, whatever worked, and you've got to go through this process before you even try to make that decision. You have to talk to NDOT and try to come up with a plan, and they're going to try to find the best and most economical plan to get there. If we'd have thought about this 25 years ago before maybe 300 had built up as much as it had, 300 probably would have been the spot way back 25 and 30 years ago. But 300 makes it a little more difficult with all the homes that are on 300, all the way from 39 all the way to, over to 52. So it makes it a little more difficult. 250 makes it a little more difficult by the ponds and so forth, you've got to go around and the number of bridge, extra bridges that have to be put in. That makes it a little more difficult. So NDOT would find another place that makes it more easy access for everybody to get to, and moving 39 over and over to 65 is a good idea for us. You know, we want traffic to come through Lebanon. You want that. You want people to come through and see downtown. But we all know, when you went four, when four o'clock gets here and you're headed north, and you might, I used to live at 715 North Lebanon Street, and I've seen people stop there, and that's still three blocks before you get to the park, you know, to get to that light. So that is a problem. And, and the last thing we want to do is put four lanes going through downtown Lebanon, and that just makes horrible luck going, going through town. So, you know, this is not, has not been thought of just overnight. And this is, it'll still take time. You know, they've got a date of 22, 24. There's no guarantee that'll happen. I know NDOT's got plans to move six lanes up, and that's coming very soon, and I know they'd probably like to, they're going to try to push to try to make this thing happen in that time period because it'd be a waste of time to wait until afterwards. If they feel like it's a good, good route and a good idea for everybody to go, they'll try to do something. So I just want you all to understand, this has not just been thought of six months ago.
Well, it was actually an NDOT's plan 10 years ago, an interchange plan to build three new, four, three or four new interchanges, and all of them have been built except for the one here. So this is, had been on NDOT's radar for a long time. Steve, could you talk a little bit about kind of where this, I guess, goes from here? I mean, we're not, at this point, is it all in the state's hands, right? I mean, we're not suggesting a location, we're not doing, I mean, it, it really goes all to the state now, right?
Yeah, it really does. I mean, it's, it's a matter of where it falls in NDOT's priority list. It has been, you know, as, as our discussions with, with the district and central office, it is, it is a priority. It falls in line with their, with their plans, with their added travel lanes plans. So it's really a matter of them just kind of picking up the torch and moving, you know, moving forward. A lot of it will hinge on whether they get grant funding. If they get grant funding, that will accelerate things. If it goes through their traditional process, it will definitely, definitely take longer.
So I know, I'm sure the reason the big crowd tonight, right, people are worried about, you know, are they going to put a, you know, new State Road 39 through my house, right? That's what people are worried about. Does, when NDOT looks at this and considers this, do they consider the amount of relocations? Do they consider, I mean, what factors are they considering when they're looking at this? I mean, it's probably not just a bottom-line thing, right?
Absolutely. So essentially what, you know, some of the things that we put up in our, in the evaluation matrix is what NDOT would ultimately look at through the NEPA process. It's a federally mandated process with, for projects of this magnitude. We're all going to look at what are the environmental impacts, the cost constraints, the environmental impacts as far as wetlands, streams, are there endangered species out, you know, out in the corridor? They'll look at all those and look at all reasonable and feasible alternatives, including no-build options, which, you know, basically means they wouldn't, they would do nothing, and come, come up with what would be the, you know, the best and preferred option, and that's what they would ultimately would construct. They'll go through a very similar but more rigorous process than what, what we did as part of this, part of this study. But what we've, what we've laid out here is a lot of groundwork that they can utilize in the early phases of their study from an alternative's perspective. You know, and we, we obviously, they'll take into account too, you know, the different alternatives as far as what, what, what the, how does it fall in with your comprehensive plans, your land use plans, you know, what, what are the, the local, the local interest, the comments from the public, you know, they'll talk, obviously, major stakeholders, the county, the cities, will all have a voice in that process.
Okay. Any further questions from Steve?
I just got one more comment. And I just thought about this as, as it might be a, I don't want to put a fear in anybody's eyes that if this happens, that all of a sudden the city's going to annex you. That's not really going to happen. I won't say someday that area may not be, or may be annexed in the city, but I'm going to tell you right now, if that should happen and get built, there's no way you're going to be annexed in the city just because of that. No, that's not, that's not going to happen. We can annex just the road and take in like 39, old 39 up to 39, stop sign, stoplight or whatever will be there. So that way the city has a responsibility of maintaining that. We can do that. We can take like old, old 52 that would run up to the 39 stoplight if the, if the state eliminates that or whatever, you know, if, if we wanted to take that, we could take that, or the county could take that. It doesn't make any difference. But we could do all that without annexing property. So I don't want you to go out and think, if we do this, we're going to come and, no, we're not going to come and, this is not to annex you into the city. So please don't let anybody tell you or put fear into you that you're going to be annexed in the city if this happens. That is not the plan. Someday, someday it will because the city will grow and it will become part of the city someday. Everything grows. Just remember, it all grows. So remember that. But there is no plans to annex anyone should, if any one of these plans got put in. There's no plans to annex any territory to get to that.
Very good point.
Okay.
Any other comment from council?
Well, I was going to make just the editorial comment, elaborate on what Richard said. Please, if we're going to have a discussion about this, don't tell me growth is not happening. It's going to happen unless the world suddenly makes a massive left turn. The north side of Lebanon's growing. I've got a new subdivision almost in my backyard. I would prefer to live out someplace where I could see for miles, but it's just not going to happen. So I really think what we're trying to do here, and I'm, I'm the newcomer on, on the council, but what we're trying to do is what I always hear complaints of, well, they didn't plan for this. They should have known this was coming, and they're not planning for it. That's what we're trying to do here. And I realize there's going to be some dissension and people disagreeing, but I hope we can all at least agree that growth is coming to the specific area, and we're trying to plan for it right now. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Well, I've got all my, my questions answered. At this point, I would want to open the floor for public comment. If you would like to say something, please feel free to step forward. We are going to try to keep, obviously, we're running a little bit later tonight, but we would like to keep comments to three minutes if possible. And if you could not repeat things that have been previously, previously said, that would also be greatly appreciated. So if anyone likes to share their thoughts, please feel free to step forward, just share your name with us and, and your address. We need you to come to the microphone, though, if you'd like to, yeah, but people are watching at home, and so they can't, they can't hear you unless you come up to the microphone. Okay. Any other comments?
I thought so.
Please, step forward.
I'm Sandra Breedlove, and I live on 300 north, and I have lived there for about 40, over 45 years. And when we purchased the land from a farmer, it was zoned about that time with residents on both sides of 300 and agricultural land in that, on the road. It's a beautiful area. It's one of the nicest areas around Lebanon. It would be a real shame to have the truck traffic and the, the number of cars in your plan was, and trucks was 11,000, but I think when he, they told about it, it was going to be much more extreme, the numbers. Forty, was it 45,000?
I think that was the estimated if it was, if that area developed, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And, but there are areas in the nation where green areas are being preserved. It's a great place to come home to. People talk about Zionsville and Whitestown. Can't wait to get out of it. It's traffic, traffic, traffic. And it is just a peaceful, beautiful area, and it would be very advantageous for it to remain that way for Lebanon. You need beautiful areas in Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Any other comments? Yes, please, step forward.
My name is Tom Valbrick. I was at the meeting, and I'm going to have to say, several months ago when this study was first talked about, and that's all this was, was a study to see what the impact possibly might be, and let Lebanon put a face forward on this to say, this is what we would like to see. But again, NDOT will make the final decision. If they want to run it right down the middle of the courthouse, NDOT will. And there's not a whole lot, we can approach, 15,000 people can stand on the courthouse lawn, but it's probably not going to get stopped. The old theory, not in my backyard, that's wonderful. But as we see Lebanon growing, and unfortunately, it seems to grow to the north continuously. Dick talked about trying to transfer roads eight minutes through town. On a Friday night, you avoid Lebanon Street. I drive for Senior Citizens Center. When we're trying to get back, we go out in the country, miles out of our way just to get back. And it's only going to get worse. Somebody spoke about, I think Brent said, home development's going to be out that way. I mean, it's just going to get worse and worse and worse, and unfortunately, not in my backyard won't work anymore. I wish it would. One way to stop it, if you, if you're a multi-billionaire, is buy all the land out there, and then you can rule on it to some extent, although government can come in and pretty well take your land back from you. Unfortunately, that's what it does. So I don't want to see it impact anybody's home. It's probably going to impact somebody somewhere, whether it's 250, 300, or the proposed new one. It's going to happen. 22, 22 and 24, that's four to six years away. That's a very short window. They've always talked about three lanes of traffic on 65. That was told many, many years ago that it was going to go from the extreme north to the extreme south. It would always be that way. And fortunately, Lebanon is near it, that our businesses and our industries can generate from that, but then our homes also have to be near it. So I'm not in favor of one plan over the other. I don't know what would work best, but I know it's probably going to happen. Whether it happens in four years or six years, only NDOT can tell us, and unfortunately, it is going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I think you made a great point. You know, our goal with this was not to select a site, right? We're just looking at the data and sharing that with the state and hopefully have a, a local site. Yes, sir, please.
Are we allowed to ask questions of the structure class?
Yeah, can you receive your...
I saw your study up there, and I know a lot of these folks are my neighbors out here, and we live basically a half mile down. I know the one option is .6 miles down, which means it'll impact our homes. So I guess my question is, I see only two residences or two structures that'll be impacted. I guess I'm curious, how is that determined, only two? Because you're going to build, from what I'm seeing, a four-lane road at .6 miles, which if I live .5 miles, I'm assuming that my property is not going to be considered to be impacted, which means now versus living out in the country, I'm going to be living next to a four-lane road passing through. So I guess I'm more concerned about the study and the impact and how you came up with only impacting two areas out of that particular construction.
Real quick, before you step away, can we get your name for the...
Marty Pickens. I'm sorry, I live at 3480 north, 150 west.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The, the number of impacts that were calculated were ones that would be within the right-of-way footprint of that new roadway. So on, on the alternative number one, there would only be two, two residents, two residences impacted where the route would come across east-west from I-65. Granted, there are obviously other impacts from a, from a noise perspective and, you know, other ancillary things, but from a physical, what would be physically impacted and what NDOT would actually buy would be those two residences. There could obviously be more once you go through the study phase, but that's, basically, we looked at that from a footprint of what NDOT would actually be buying for, for the right-of-way, whether it be necessary for the road.
And also, if I do, we didn't propose, we're not proposing any road design on how big or how wide that road would be, correct?
We assumed a four-lane section, which would normally have about a 200-foot right-of-way right-of-way section.
Okay.
Two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, so I guess in layman's terms, basically, if the building was within the right-of-way or within a very short buffer zone, that would be the, the two that was on that one route.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Marty.
Yeah, they can only hear you at home if you're up there, so I know it's.
I guess my next question is, is there a detailed, can we get online someplace to see the detailed plan or is it just a line drawn across? Because I can already tell you, I know I'm not going to be impacted as far as my structure because I've got a neighbor across the road, I've got another neighbor next door to us, prices that have a pond and everything, so I'm assuming the prices are going to definitely be impacted. Our property's probably not, so I guess I would like to see a detailed plan someplace. Is there one we can get ahold of that actually physically shows your recommendation, number one?
Well, we, we didn't make a recommendation on one. Just wanted to clarify.
Actually, I mean, we live, the one that would impact this would be option one, should NDOT, should NDOT pick it.
I got you.
You know, option one would be the one that impacts our residents, and the others will impact other people in the room, I'm sure, but I'm really more emotionally concerned about my property.
Completely understandable, yep. Go ahead, Kevin, sorry.
Just real quickly, our office is across the hall. There's copies there available. The, the total study is about two hundred and seventy pages long. Feel free to come in and look at that. We can make copies, but we would have to charge you for copies, but we will have the study available if you want to come in and look at it. We posted it on Facebook. We can get it on the study website as well. We wanted to get this information out before we, before we post it on the website, just to make sure people have the proper information to view the study.
Yeah, so there, there is a link that, on the City Engineers Facebook page, there's a link that they posted there. It, it's the full, it's the full.
Kevin?
Well, that's, well, that, that's the full report, that's all we have.
But the exact plan is not, it's not, it's not available because it hasn't been drawn up. So State of Indiana could change what this preliminary study came up with.
You're right.
It could go north, south, whatever.
The, the planning feasibility study is what I'm referring to, is, as the plan that's available for, for viewing on the Facebook page. We'll get it on the website as well. That is, that is the feasibility plan. That is not, if you're referring to like a plan, a set of construction documents, that doesn't exist.
I think that's what Marty was asking for, and that's not, that's not available because it's going to be different than what it's on this page.
We, we are not preparing that plan. There is no consultant either for the state or for the city of Lebanon that is preparing that plan. That plan, if you're referring to construction plans, doesn't exist. It wouldn't exist until NDOT takes this through the next couple of phases.
Out of curiosity, in that two hundred and sixty-six pages, does it indicate the property addresses of those buildings?
No. It, it does not, because it, I mean.
Yeah, so I think that answers that question, the specific building isn't identified.
Yeah, ultimately, the, when NDOT takes it over, it could be moving north or south by hundreds or thousands of, of feet, so.
Yeah.
It's very high level.
There'll be, there'll be several public hearings.
Oh, NDOT would hold several.
Because they'll have a map drawn up and then, and the public can come in and talk to NDOT about making changes.
Keep, keep in mind, I mean, this is an image from the study.
Right.
And there are some images that get a little bit more detailed in there, but this is, this is a high, a high-level planning document, you know, so I don't think anyone would be willing to sit here today and tell you that you can, sorry about the glare, that you could bank on that line, you know? That, that's going to have to be studied further. There's going to have to be justification reports, there's going to have to be other things done at the state and federal level before that line is refined enough that we can say, here's the exact impact. But we have to draw lines on a paper, we have to do studies, we have to use those lines to make assumptions, but the final line would not be established for some time.
Like Steve said, it could be, it could be, it could be two miles north. We don't really know.
I doubt it would be that much further.
I know, I know, but, you know, he's at thousands of feet, so.
Yeah, to say, well, that misses my house or that hits my neighbor's house. Well, at this level, sure, you know, this is Sharpie's on a thousand-foot scale aerial map. You know, we won't know exactly.
I just want to keep it in perspective.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Please, step forward. If you want, you can just form a line back there if you want.
Hello, my name's Steve Winning. I apologize, this is actually the first time I've been to one of these meetings. I just actually heard about this a couple of weeks ago, or actually, a couple of days ago. Looking at the map, I'm not directly impacted. I live at thirty-two sixty-five north, twenty-five east, which seems to be to the east of all this. But just kind of listening to this, I just wanted to make a couple observations. It seems that your study is looking at what to do with the traffic on State Road thirty-nine. You want to get rid of the trucks coming through Lebanon, and you also want to plan for residential growth to the north of Lebanon. And when I look at the maps, it looks like you're proposing, well, not proposing, but you're studying the potential of a four-lane road going through a proposed new residential area. And basically, my observations have always been, people don't want to have residences on four-lane roads. And so what I was just sitting here thinking is, you have State Road forty-seven, which is already designed for some traffic. The state is going to be making changes to that intersection anyway, because they're going to be adding another lane going up there. I know this is late in the game, but maybe just an idea out there is, what happens if you divert thirty-nine at forty-seven for truck purposes, but for your development purposes, look at the best interchange that will be there when the residential area is complete. In other words, we're kind of looking at where we should put it. Now, I guess the, the one proposal looks at putting it a little bit further north, but when that residential area is complete, you may want to put it a little bit further north, a little bit further south, but if you don't have any truck traffic going on it, then you can make it truly for residents. And then if forty-seven is widened, that could be your diversion point. And it seems like that would make the residential area that much better for Lebanon in the future. Just an observation, no recommendations.
Thank you for comments, sir.
Thank you.
My name is William Price. A good point. You know, some of us, when we moved out there, we actually calculated. We looked around us at the farmers that were there, and we looked at farmers, we thought, you're going to be keeping that land for a long time and keeping it in your families. So that's how we protected ourselves, of getting out away from the city and having some quality of life. And as he said, we, we work with the roads that are there now. Three hundred's there, it can be widened a little bit, and houses are already on it. They know it's an existing road. One thing I keep hearing is you're moving thirty-nine. Would you explain what you mean by that?
Sure. So what they call is relinquishment. So currently, thirty-nine runs sort of from south of us right through town, by the courthouse, north all the way to forty-seven, right? That's, that's thirty-nine. So when they do relinquishment, the, with the state road can move to a federal highway or a new location. So, so imagine, you know, everything from the Starbucks north to wherever this new location would come in, would that would, thirty-nine would shift off of Lebanon Street to sixty-five and then to the new road coming in, so.
So essentially, it's an access road, like we have when we built interstates next to existing highways.
I would say it's an access road. It would become a local street. So right now, right?
But it would be right next to the highway, right?
No, it would be on, it would be, it would be the highway.
It would be the highway.
So it, just like when, when, when fifty-two merges into sixty-five, and that actually becomes, that's still fifty-two, but it's also sixty-five. So it's both of those at the same time. So it would be fifty-two, thirty-nine and sixty-five all at once.
So when your traffic comes off this interchange up north, where does it go in this four-lane road?
That four-lane road would be thirty-nine still.
Would be what?
Would be thirty, State Road thirty-nine.
No, you're talking about cutting across wet road. Where are you going with that? You're going over to the existing thirty-nine, right?
That is currently thirty-nine.
Yes.
Yes.
So why are you doing that?
So the actual thirty-nine itself would shift from where it is, not, obviously, no roads are being torn up. We will still have the road there, but the path of what is deemed a State Road thirty-nine would shift to Interstate sixty-five.
At that interchange, coming off sixty-five, heading over toward the existing thirty-nine, where's that traffic going? It's going to the old thirty-nine, right?
It's on thirty-nine. It is thirty-nine. It's on thirty-nine. Thirty-nine makes a ninety-degree turn. So it's on thirty-nine going over to thirty-nine slash Lebanon Street. And then wherever their destination is, whether that be north to Frankfurter or back south.
But you're talking about eliminating that as far as traffic and moving it over next to the interstate.
No, so the, the physical road is still going to exist. So if we can put that picture back up there.
Where does that road go as it heads down toward the town of, city of Lebanon?
It would.
How do you get rid of the trucks? You think the trucks are not going to come down through there?
So when trucks, so they have to use a truck route, okay? So when it shifts over to sixty-five, that's the new truck route. They would, they will still use truck, I mean, if we need to have local deliveries and things like that, they will still use Lebanon Street, but it would change, but it would no longer be the, because right now, the truck route is through town. It's, that is, that is the truck route, if that's what they say to do. So if thirty-nine shifts to sixty-five, that becomes the truck route. And so they're only, if they're making local deliveries, they would be on the stretch from the Starbucks to the hospital now.
If you come up thirty-nine, you either come across there, there, or there. That would become the new.
Three minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's even worse.
Or fifty-two would come that way and then down.
So what, you're going to put a big roundabout here?
It'd be an interchange.
No.
Don't scare us with a roundabout.
I don't know if anyone heard that on the monitor, but no.
But here's a point he made. If you're, if you're going to do something, go up to forty-seven, because look way ahead if that's going to develop. And the north side's developing, it's not the type developing happening on the south side, which is where you said all the development was going to be, heading down towards Zion'sville and Whitestown. Well, that hasn't happened.
Well, I, I think.
But the houses coming up north are, are more houses that want quality of life, they want to get away from the city a little bit and out, away from it. So that's, that's what you need to think about. What are you doing to the area out there? Yeah, you're bringing a highway in there, and so we go for the security, the farmers, and so now you go right through their fields. So something to think about.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments, please?
My name's Philip Endries. I live at thirty-three eighty-two north, one fifty west, and I just wanted some clarification over what exactly are NDOT's goals? The only thing I clearly got out of the earlier discussion was, it sounds like they want to eliminate the Lafayette Avenue exit because that, yeah, it's a, it's hard.
It's dangerous.
Maneuver. Is, is that, is that it? And if that's all that it is that they want to do, then why are we pushing all this extra scope of work to reroute thirty-nine and so on?
Well, because if we, because if they, if they redid the interchange, they're going to make it where they connect it to, to the road. So I mean, unless, unless the option is to completely shut off the Lebanon exit.
Exactly.
But I don't think from a.
If they just want to get rid of the Lafayette Avenue exit, it doesn't seem like it's a very useful entrance, entryway into the city anyway. Why, why isn't the scope, why don't we just limit the scope to that?
We're also, because, you know, right now, about sixty percent of the city that lives north of thirty-two, that's the, so that causes the traffic issues we have on, on thirty-nine through town right now. So having a northern interchange that's accessible either by the south eliminates that issue.
You, you also have to look, there's, there's been a pretty substantial safety issue created by the additional traffic coming through Lebanon. So we have a couple of counselors that live up on the, the north side of town. The fastest way for them to get anywhere is for them to actually go north to three hundred, take three hundred out, and then jump on fifty-two and come down. So you're doing a couple of things when you do that. Number one, everyone that lives on three hundred north, raise your hand if you think your average speed has gone up in the last five years on your road. And if you're not raising your hand, you're lying, because it, it's gone up substantially. So we've got a, a big safety issue out there that needs to be addressed, and it's, it's beyond having a police car sit there because it, it's a bigger issue. Number two, once you get to three hundred, now you're turning across a four-lane divided state highway of fifty-two to get on to I sixty-five south. So how can we protect folks that are turning there as well? So there's, there's a long-term vision of, we've kind of created a traffic situation. How can we protect that area up there, give access to the northern portion of Lebanon, but still have some sort of, you know, these three options are three viable options that, I'll say, path of least resistance, even though there's, there's obviously stuff in the way.
I just, we'll make one more comment, is that I make that turn south onto fifty-two off of three hundred north every day to go to work, and I can't remember the last time there was an accident there, so that's all I have to say.
How did that turn go when the interstate was shut down for months? It, you didn't, it, it was substantially different, and the fact that when the, the interstate closes there, it's different as well. I'm, I'm not saying there's not impact, I'm just saying that there's a difference.
Any further comments?
I'm James Ritter, and I live on three hundred north, right by the overpass now, two houses in the middle, and traffic has increased out there. I do agree with the gentleman, if we're going to develop to the north, why aren't we going farther north? Forty-seven does seem like a viable option.
But if it was a viable option, wouldn't people use it today?
Beg your pardon?
If it was a viable option, wouldn't people use it today?
So, and another question I would have would be, if we're going twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-four, is that the beginning of the project? And how many phases do we have to go through until completion? As far as buying phase, appraisal phases, all of those different phases, engineering approval, how much time are we talking about?
There'd be a question for the American Construction Point.
That, that, that schedule obviously is, is very, would be a very aggressive schedule, and that would be the, the absolute quickest that you could possibly go. And in my, in my history of working with, with the state, you're probably talking a minimum of, of eight to ten years before, with all the study, with the, with the NEPA study that would have to go forward, the interchange justification study, design, right-of-way acquisition, it's probably ten-plus years at a, at a minimum from, from moving forward.
Next question would be, when are we going to have any idea of what the real project is going to be?
It's really, that, at this point in time now, it's, we'll be, all of our information, we provided that over to NDOT as they've been a stakeholder through this process. It's really for them to, to pick up the, pick up the torch if they want to move this project forward.
So basically, we don't know a damn thing?
That's correct. It's in, it's in NDOT's hands, so.
We've, we've done everything we can from the local level. At this point, it's the state's decision. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the presentation of the interchange feasibility study. Thank you, council. All right, I'm going to continue on with new business now. So this is Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two-seven concerning the public safety lit appropriation request concerning school safety. Put that up here real quick.
I want to do a brief recess.
Let him go.
Brief recess for everybody.
Recession, we'll recess for five minutes.
We're going to re-adjourn the meeting at this point. Uh, next item up I have here is Resolution 2018 dash 27, which is a resolution of the common council of the city of Lebanon, Indiana for initial appropriation. Rob, will you please read the resolution for us?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This additional appropriation states that this council maintains the fiscal integrity and finances of the city. And at times it may become necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget as contemplated by Indiana code. And it's been determined now necessary to appropriate more money than originally was appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, which this has been noticed for a public hearing. Resolution 2018 dash 27 is appropriate funds for school safety. It will be out of fund 105 Public Safety Lit in the amount of $300,000.
Okay, thank you, Rob. So a couple of months ago, something pretty tragic happened in Indianapolis. I think it kind of put a little bit more focus for us here. What we have before us tonight is a proposed plan that would bring five additional school resource officers and put them in, excuse me, four additional school resource officers and put them into our Lebanon schools. This would be a partnership between the city and the school. It also includes some equipment for the resource officers and some, and their, and other additional costs. So the request for tonight is for, as I mentioned, $300,000. That is the initial startup cost. This also includes security measures for the doors that would, if there was a case of intruder in our schools, the teachers would be able to secure their classroom doors, protect their children in the class. So there are some additional startup costs for this, but in future years, the, the cost would go down to about $270,000 a year. But this is an additional first year, for the first year. At this point, I'd like to have Dr. Taylor come forward and speak and say anything about, you know, we've sat down, went down to a Thai place in Whitestown. They had a little chat about what we wanted to see for the school and really just said, here's a, here's some things we've been thinking about. And we kind of came together with this plan together, so. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening for the consideration of, of this allocation of funds for the school. As several of you know, I'm a third generation Hoosier school superintendent. My grandfather, my father, were all superintendents of school, and I'm proud to be a superintendent and privileged to be here in Lebanon. The difference is my grandfather, his greatest worry was who was going to turn over the outhouse. That's all he really had to worry about as far as school security. My dad, bless his heart, he worried about who was smoking unfiltered camels into men's restroom. I unfortunately have to worry about student shooters, intruders, violent behaviors in schools that are unprecedented in our time. And when the mayor approached me earlier this summer and was passionately concerned about how we could increase school safety and security. In essence, how do we make schools safer for our students and our staff? We talked at great length about what we felt was appropriate. And you'll hear a lot of things. School safety is a cottage industry in the United States these days. But the most effective, and I believe the most beneficial utilization of funding for student safety is through placing trained school resource officers in every school. Currently, Lebanon Community School Corporation has three school resource officers under the direction of Steve Smith, our chief. We have been able to apply those three individuals that we have through hook and by crook and by pulling from here and there funded. And also through some grant dollars that we felt was necessary. But what that left us with was, was fragmented coverage and protection. And I think incidents that we've seen occur in the last couple of years and unfortunately intensely in the last six months have shown that the presence of a full-time person trained, not only in law enforcement, but also in school resource, greatly reduces the vulnerability of students and staff. And so when we sat down and the mayor proposed, what could we do? We sat and jointly talked about the benefit of being able to place a school resource officer full-time in every school. And with that being the, the foundation of how we would like to move forward in increasing our, our safety in our buildings, not only during the school day, but also during extracurricular events. If any of you have had the, the pleasure of attending a Lebanon High School commencement, you know that we put 4,000-plus people in that gymnasium. If you've been to a sectional basketball game, you see that facility is almost as full. During the week at Lebanon High School alone, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 9,000 to 11,000 people go in and out of the building. Students, staff, delivery personnel, grandparents, parents, those individuals come in and out of our school building. There's about 1,100 students in that building. So public education is exactly that. Provides access to facilities to the public. So it's a fine line in how we ensure security for our students and staff and still maintain public facility. And when Mayor Gentry came and we started to talk and we started to look at the experts and we went to not only Chief Smith, but also to the LPD and, and to our partners in Whitestown because of our school impery worth, we started to come up with a, a budget and a plan. And it was quickly evident to me, as I talked to our school board of trustees, that the plan and the budget were a bit of ways apart. The reality was not going to actually happen unless we had some assistance. And at this, tonight, as you consider this, this resolution, you would be providing the financial opportunity for us to put immediately, day one of this new school year, a full-time dedicated SRO in every school. A person that would become not only a fixture, as, as is the teacher or principal or cafeteria worker or student, but would become someone who we know would develop ownership. And with that, ownership becomes a high level of dedication and commitment that they would be able to provide to not only the students, but to all visitors that come to our school. So as this became more reality and we started to look at what the opportunities were and we started to look at taking away the, the frills and taking away the, the latest and greatest and getting right down to the core of what provides the greatest, most secure learning environment for our students. The plan that we developed and the plan that the mayor and I looked at and, and really had input from LPD and, and our own SRO and using best practice around the nation, came down to simply being able to afford to place a trained security officer in every school. And with your consideration of, of the proposal that's before you this evening, we will implement that, as I said, start of day one. Matter of fact, if the council is, is gracious enough to award the school corporation this partnership of financing support of our security, Chief Smith and I are sitting down with six individuals tomorrow to start the interview process. Our plan is to have those individuals presented to the Lebanon Community School Board of Trustees a week from tomorrow night for approval and to have them outfitted, trained, and signed as Lebanon Community School Corporation School Resource Officers by the first of August. So again, I must give my sincere thanks to Mayor Gentry for his passion and dedication. You know, you'll see a lot of folks out there, this is a, this is a soundbite. Kids and safety make a nice soundbite. But when you have someone that have kids and safety and the passion and the commitment to bring that together, that's not a soundbite. That's a great civic leader. And I would ask that you have favorable consideration this evening for the proposal that's on the table. This is not a total funding by the city. Lebanon Community School Corporation will still have a lot of financial skin in the game. We will continue to find sustainability. We will continue to look for grant options that we have everywhere from Homeland Security to federal government. But this allows us to implement day one of this school year, what I believe is the optimum security arrangement to provide the students and the staff and our community in our schools. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have. Chief Smith has joined us this evening as well, and he's here if you have any hardcore technical questions. But I would be glad to entertain any questions members of the council has this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Any questions for Dr. Taylor?
Yeah, yeah. Now, the city's going to put in X number of dollars and, and as I understand it, as costs increase, the school corporation is going to take care of those increases.
That's correct. What this will, yes, that's correct, Mr. Kincaid. Our plan at this point is, one, as, as the mayor discussed, there are some startup costs that we have. There are some new implementations from hardware and, and for obvious reasons. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail in a public forum on that, but I'll be glad to speak to council members individually. But there would be some startup costs in the first year. We will incur any kind of cost relating to personnel, whether it's regard to wages, salaries, benefits, or increases in personnel. That can be budgeted for. But as you're well aware, the budgetary process is, is not a rabbit in a race. It's a snail in a slow pace. And so with, working with our CFO, Mr. Tate, and with our Lebanon Community School Board of Trustees, we will anticipate through budgetary process, the opportunity to meet any of those additional needs. So the proposal that I believe you have in front of you talks about a three-year commitment that allows us sustainability. And then I won't sit here and say someone won't come back and ask for some additional funds. But as we sit here right now, there will be no additional requests from Lebanon Community Schools in that three-year window of period. And we will maintain one officer per facility with the appropriate training, the appropriate logistical support, the appropriate operational support through that three-year period.
Yeah, the great thing about having someone in there is they get to know people and they get the, they know the flow, the energy in the building. And I think they'll be able to sense something, possibly, you know, someone will come up and talk to them and that type of thing. I think it's a great idea.
We've seen that already, Mr. Kincaid, and that the officers we currently have have developed relationships. And where a student may not share something during the school day, you may see someone at one of our local retail stores or in the park or out on the basketball court and they happen to sit, pull over and say, hey, can I talk to you about this? And that leads to something else and we become more proactive and preventative instead of reactive in trying to deal with those issues.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question for you on that SRO. Are they going to be in the building 20, I mean, all the time that the building is open to the public? There's going to be one there? There's never going to be a minute that a school does not have an SRO in it?
I can't say that there'll never be a minute. The intent right now is to have an SRO in the building from, before the bell goes off for students to enter until the bell calls for students to leave. Now, there will be opportunities in times where if we have an after-school event such as a PTO meeting or an athletic event, those officers, because now we're increasing our, our SRO presence from three officers to seven officers, then we'll have an opportunity to cross-cover some of those events. So that one officer, say, that's dedicated to Central Elementary, if there is a PTO meeting or a carnival or a fundraiser, it may not be that officer that's there in the evening, but Chief Smith has, is working on scheduling techniques that will allow that coverage to be there. So there'd be interdepartmental operational coverage for those facilities. But to have, to say that you're going to have the same officer in that building to cover all activities, I don't think that's probable.
No, that's not the question. The question is, there's going to be an SRO officer every second. There's people in those schools, whether it's the same person or not, you can transfer anybody you want in there, another SRO.
Keith, do you mean, do you mean people or during the school day?
The school day, all the day when the kids are there and the teachers are still there. And it would be nice if they could stay there in the evenings too, if you could work it out. But that's what I'm saying. What you don't want to do is find an SRO officer somewhere else and all of a sudden there happens to be something in the school and he wasn't there. That's my whole point.
So our intent, Mr. Campbell, is to do exactly that, to ensure that there's an individual, a trained law enforcement individual, an SRO, in the building during the entire school day. Now, given and some recent incidents we've had here in our community, there may be a time where an officer has to go to assist with another school. But we have a very strong relationship with, with both LPD and Boone County Sheriff. But the intent is not to have that person leave. They have full responsibility for that building. In addition, with some additional, a, a small contribution we're getting from Whitestown, we will also be employing a part-time truancy officer. So those home visits and those reaching out to students that are truant and those families that maybe are, need to have a, a little reach-out touch from the school, we won't have to pull officers from the school. We'll have that person not assigned to a school that'll be able to do that. Likewise, when someone's ill, Officer Smith's built into the schedule or Chief Smith's already built into how we have internal coverage. So if someone's ill or there's a family issue, we plan to have that covered. It's not like that's just one person, one school. If I'm sick, I'm not going to be there. We will have the security in place because of the, the size of the individ, the force that we have at the department we have.
And we do have seven officers for six schools, so we already have that kind of built in as well.
I understand that. And then we're talking about three years, right?
The initial, is my understanding is the resolution on the table.
It's not in this, but we will have an MOU that will talk about.
I talked to the mayor about the opportunity to have sustainability and for having sustainability to allow me to work with our school board and our budgetary process with the state. The state provides no funding at this time for school security. So it's through other funds that we have that we've had to reallocate into different expenditures that have allowed us to have the officers we currently have. So with that, I anticipate possibly the state to reconsider that. But the three-year sustainability allows us to hire officers with a commitment to say, you're here because we're looking for experienced officers. We're looking for those that have gone through the academy, that have had SRO training, that have had past law enforcement training. And in order for us to be able to provide a viable employment scenario, we felt it was important that we guaranteed at least three years of employability. And when I talked to the mayor about that, that was one thing that I felt was critical for us, just not to go out and hire a quote, "security watchperson" that you might see at, at the mall. And I'm not going to make disparaging comments about that type of individual, but we're looking for a highly qualified, highly trained, specific school resource officer. And in order to do that, I felt it was important that we had to have that element of, of longevity to at least entice them to come onboard.
What do you do with this individual during the summertime?
I'm sorry?
What do you do with this individual that's highly trained when summer's in session? There's no school.
We, we have, the, the contracts that we look at, based on the salaries that we're talking about, will be in the 200. So we'll have a built-in about a 17 to 25-day extension of the school year, in which time they can do physical security analysis. They can do internal and external review. They can work on policy and development of that. Also work with our students in, in some of those safety and protocols. But because those officers are, are going to be on a, a salary structure that's not quite as competitive, total salary with local law enforcement's agency, it is competitive on an hourly basis. And so the individuals we're, we're interviewing understand that. My guess would be though, as has proven in the past, and I don't want to take advantage of this, but it, it helps. When an individual connects with a school building, whether it's a volunteer, teacher, parent, they're there. You don't have to tell them to show up. You don't have to have them sign in. You don't have to have them punch a card. They develop a relationship. They develop a relationship with the students and the faculty, they become, in essence, part of that school, and that's what we're striving for.
I understand. That's, that's kind of my thought, too, right? Once we give you the money, it's out of the hands of this board, or out of this council. So how do we hold your board accountable to make sure that that money's going towards that cause?
I'll go to two, two, two ways to answer that question, Mr. Fleming. One is I'll point to the historical partnership that the city and the school corporation has had, whether it's in the construction of facilities such as the Herman B. Wells Room, whether it's in the utilization of our school facilities for LPD to come and train, cross-train into first responder kind of scenarios, or it's our partnership with the fire department. We historically have had what I would describe as one of the best, if not the best, city school partnerships in the state of Indiana. And so I would say that that's part of that trust relationship that you have there. On top of that, it's my intent, along with Chief Smith, to provide this council with, at your, it could be monthly, if you're going to have meetings like this, I would say maybe every other month. But we would provide updates, in which we provide information relating to the logistical op and the operational function of the SRO. Also, we're extending invitations to all council members to become, in essence, kind of an onsite visitation team. So we would provide everything from, from schedules to, you know, now, we won't provide student-specific information, because we can't, but we would provide operational information as to hours, days, times, such as activities and things that we're already working on with some of the elementary schools. We want those SROs, you're just not going to walk the halls. Do you get in and start helping with teaching a class? Do you help facilitate some civic-minded initiative in some of our younger students? Do we work with some of our older students in career development and work-based learning, where we have partnerships where those students can then speak firsthand with a law enforcement individual about what are some criminal justice activities? So it'd not only be the safety and security component, which will be the number-one priority, but it'll also be an integration of that individual into the culture of the school. But to answer your specific question, it's our intent to come back and report out to this council at their request, all of the activities that are both being funded by the council and the activities of the department in whole.
That answered my question, because as much as we talk about trust, I trust no one, right? Until I'm checking it myself, so.
You're under the trust but verify rule.
That's right, that's correct.
It's not a bad rule. You're a parent, it's a council member. We're very open to that. I hope I somewhat maybe answered some of your concerns.
You did. Thank you, Doc.
I have a procedural question that I think we're all kind of discussing. We've talked about this being an ongoing thing. Do we need to write the resolution in that way, or are we going to just do it new every year?
Well, so my thought is, so this year, since this is a new additional appropriation, we can, this will be the, just one additional, and then when we go through our budgets throughout the year, I mean, we budget the lit budget, public safety lit budget. So that, that point, we'll put, just put whatever we believe the amount that they need in that budget.
Okay.
And so we can have discussions with, you know, whoever the Lebanon Police Chief is can speak with the school police chief, and to make sure things are what they need, what their priorities are, where they are.
So I guess my only question is, is that going to negatively impact you hiring people? Because officers may be going, well, if I'm not sure the money's there next year, why would I want to do that?
Well, and that's why I think the memorandum of understanding between the school and the city that sets us to that three-year agreement, I think, is where, and also the guys.
That was my question to Dr. Taylor, so on the three years. Let's say the money from us stops at three years. Are you going to be able to fund in between then?
I can't speak three years out with state budgeting, but I can speak to the fact that the, every effort will be made to include within the budget the cost of, the full cost. But I also won't tell you, Mr. Campbell, that I won't be back here with my hat in my hand, asking again for support. But at this point, the three years allows us that planning time through the budgetary process to start calculating how we keep those officers in place, just like going with the pay increases, or with increasing costs in insurance or health insurance, we're going to pick up all of that. We aren't, you're going to help us, but eventually that becomes our cost. Anyone that's been in the health insurance arena lately knows that those costs go up unpredictably high. I feel it's fair, it's our skin in the game, and I, and my board agrees that as part of our show of good faith and appreciation, we will, we will cover those. We'll make that effort. I won't come back for those. If the, if the council is gracious enough to see fit to provide us with this three-year funding that the mayor is proposing, as I said, I will not be returning to this, I'll be coming back a lot to say thank you and to give Mr. Fleming my updates on what we're doing. But I will also guarantee that we will not, Lebanon Community School Corporation will not come back and ask for additional funds at this point.
My only comment is, I want to thank the mayor and Dr. Taylor for getting together and coming up with something. I've been wondering for months, what are we doing? What could we do, or can we do? And I'm really glad to see that we've come up with something to do, to help our school and help protect our kids while they're there. So, thank you, both of you.
Councilman Weed, I'm not sure I answered your question that you asked.
Yes, sir.
If I did, okay, thank you.
And, you know, I just want to make one further point, based on my background as retiring from LPD, and Steve and I go back many years, Chief Smith there. We talk about, you know, that horrible day when there's the school shooter, and hopefully we'll never see that. But what gets lost in this sometime is, as much as I've prodded my fellow school resource officers at times, they serve a really valuable function, and number one, they take away the workload from LPD. So this is actually money we're spending that is kind of a force multiplier, because of, if, I can't tell you how many reports at Lebanon High School didn't have to be taken by LPD because they were doing it. So that's a good thing. And then there's just that day-to-day interaction with the students that is exceptionally positive and goes to that community policing model that we're also concerned about, that prevents problems from happening in the first place. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that, yeah, we're all worried about school shooters, but they really do serve a valuable function in the school day-to-day and there. Chief, I said something nice about SROs.
I think one of the comments was, what happens if the money dries up? We're still going to provide the optimum safety we can. But I'll go back to what I said to Councilman Fleming. There's a trust factor that after 23 years in this community, I've come to count on fairly heavily. And it's been proven time and time again that the city of Lebanon values their school system, values their students, values their future. And I have every confidence that the partnership that hopefully we're about to enter into will be not only productive in many ways, but will be long-term. And I thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to the council this evening.
Another question, Mayor. Tonya, do we have to ask for additional appropriations to make this happen?
We already have.
We've already had?
That's what, this is, this is approved tonight, this is ready to go.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we...
We got to do a public hearing on this. So I'll make sure there's any more questions from council. John?
I just, I just had one commoner question. At the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned on securing funding, you talked about Homeland Security, federal, state funding. I didn't know if this year, the short session or special session of the state, didn't they set aside $5 million or something like that for funding for this particular project?
I can respond to that, Mr. Mayor. They did, they set aside, I do believe it was $5 million, but they set aside in the form of a loan. So now through the Common School Loan Program, you can borrow the money. That's just like borrowing money to buy buses, borrowing money to buy different equipment. If you have to budget for that, it's still money that you, that you can have access to, but really don't have a means other than raising taxes by which to pay it off. We can raise taxes to, for debt service-type issues. I'll point out with a pat on the back that we're below a dollar and have been for the last several years, we're one of the lowest taxing entities in public education within the nine-county district. So if that would have been the route we would have gone, Councilman Copeland, we would have had to look at debt service. And how we come back into debt service and repay.
No, I was just talking that, I thought they, they came out with a fund for the schools. I didn't know it was a loan program.
You and every other superintendent in the state thought the same thing. And when it came out as a form of the Common School Loan, it was a bit disappointing, because there are a number of school corporations that, in the state of Indiana, that just can't afford it.
Right.
They can't, they're, they're having trouble turning the lights on. So the, yes, there was $5 million allocated during the short session, there's been some discussion, I've spoken with a couple of legislators already that have reached out, and they're, they're looking to how they could refinance. So who knows what the next by any of them will bring? But when school opens here in about three weeks, I want to see an SRO officer greeting kids and parents in front of every school. And if you can assist us in making that happen, I would be sincerely appreciative, as well as every student, staff member, and administrator we have.
One final comment, I, whatever the cost is, we'll find a way to get it done, because the cost of not doing it is way too high.
When I came to Lebanon in 1995, was middle school principal, and we were talking about school violence, and I'd come from overseas working with Department of Defense, and I remember talking to the, the business manager at the time, and said, well, what are we going to do about this? Ah, that's never going to happen. This is Lebanon. Well, sadly enough, over the last two decades, Lebanon's not immune. It's a wonderful place, it's a great place, but we're not immune from any of those other things that we've seen as close as Noblesville, or as far away as Florida and Texas. So this is, this is a reality that we're coming to grips with. Right now, every student in my school has been in school during some form of school violence that none of us, and I've got more gray hair than most of you, none of us had to worry about when we were in school. When we were in school, schools and churches were the safest places in America. That's not the same anymore. So, thank you.
You.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So this was noted up as a public hearing, this is additional appropriation, so at this time, I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2018-27. If you have any comments, please feel free to step forward and share, just state your name. We're just going to have a, again, three-minute timeline to speak on this one as well, too.
I have one quick question, either Dr. Taylor or Chief Smith can answer it. You're saying we're going to have to hire four new SROs, because we have three.
That's correct.
I don't know what an SRO training requires, I have no idea, I wouldn't even begin to understand it. Are we going to be, and I hate to use this word, robbing from the police department to get these, are there gentlemen out there, or ladies, I'm sorry to say it that way, that are already up and trained, that have this ability to step in this position in three weeks? That's my concern is, I, there's nothing more important than our children. I have two grandchildren in Lebanon schools, and two grandchildren in the Pike area. There's nothing more important than, than our children. We can't spend enough money to protect them. But my concern is, where are these, you say you have six candidates, I don't want to know the names of the candidates, that's for sure, but there are people out there that are already able to step in these positions that quick?
They are.
And be trained. Now, I don't want a non-trained person in there, because we've seen what's happened in some of these other cities, the officer did not react the way he should have.
So there's actually, so there actually is a law enforcement academy, so there's a Level One Law Enforcement Academy, which is everything that, you know, Lebanon Police Officer or Boone County Sheriff's Deputy that they go to. There's a Level Two Law Enforcement Academy, which applies for school resource officers, Department of Corrections officials. So all of, to be in order to be a school resource officer, you have to have that Level Two accreditation.
Sure, that's what I'm saying.
So, so yes, they will be all trained, and yes.
Evidently, there are people out there already waiting for these positions, possibility.
Correct. I'll be honest, I'll speak, it's a lot of the retiree guys, you know, they're, they're ready to go. They view that as a, a good way to stay in law enforcement, do something meaningful without going to domestics and the trailer court at 4:00 AM. So, yeah, Lebanon PD will probably lose one or two people, but, you know, it's, you're still retaining that experience in the community, and the departments work so close together. I don't think it's a big concern. I've just spoken for our chief.
Like I said, I'm just saying, you know, are we going to lose four of our officers, county, city, whatever, that we've invested money and time in, that we've got to then, I know you just can't walk out and tap someone on the shoulder, say, you're a cop now.
Yeah, about fifty, about 50% of our department is within five years of retirement. So, so we're...
I do know that.
Trying to keep, but, try to keep the ranks.
I'm pretty sure, we did not poach, I used the term poach. When I talked to Chief Smith, we made very certain that we wanted to respect our partnership with both LPD and Boone County Sheriff's. So we did have some interest, and we had quite a bit of interest, we were very surprised. We've been tentative, as I was sharing with someone earlier, I didn't want to put the cart before the horse, and, and not that you're the horse, but you are the horse. And so we wanted to wait to do this, but we also knew we were in a fairly aggressive timeline. So we've done some preliminary discussion, we've done some preliminary reviews, there are some folks that just didn't meet, they didn't have that training, they were not able to step up, we didn't feel they, they were probably law enforcement officers on the road, but working with 75, five-year-olds, it's a different world. And so I have to compliment Chief Smith, he's been very aggressive in the last three weeks, and so if, if this is approved, we have six qualified and experienced from the breadth. We have some that have 25 years of experience, we have some that have two or three. We have a correction officer that's been in the corrections field, he's interested in coming onboard. We have a young lady. So, so we're not poaching, but we're, we're not just going out and hiring anyone that says, hey, I want to, I want to be a cop.
I don't want that person in our school.
So we're going to be there for that. So we're going to be there for that.
You spoke of, your students today have all seen violence. Mike Kincaid will, about this, when we went to high school, there were pickup trucks in the parking lot, they all had gun racks in them. And there were guns in those racks, and there was never a school shooting.
Mike, I thought you rode horses to school.
I didn't have a gun.
Well, I just picked out Mike, I could have picked out some other names, but, you know, we didn't have that issue, but that's not longer available to us. I'm, you're concerned about any, any kind of public meeting. Somebody could get very irate at a road coming through my property that I don't want to have.
You notice we have armed, we usually have a police officer here, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it is. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any further comments? Cindy, if you just want to come up and kind of wait in line?
I'm John Lassley, I just wanted to, I guess, thank Mr. Smith and also Dr. Taylor. My wife is a schoolteacher, and she has gone through two or three different instances where she's scared. And I hope the seven of you think about, you know, this very seriously, because I actually, when the Beaumont Ordeal was, I actually sat outside the back of her school, because no one was back there, because I was worried that something may, you know, end up happening, even though things were pretty much under control. A year ago, I went to Matt Gentry and made the comment that, you know, something ought to be done, because our students, as Tom said, there's, there's not a price, a million dollars a head is not enough for the students that we have in our schools. And I just hope you guys take this seriously and realize that this, this would be a very good benefit to the schools. And again, I just want to thank Officer Smith and Dr. Taylor for all you do, because I can't imagine, you know, having to deal with some of the things that she comes home and tells me. It's, it's amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Cindy?
Cindy Zimmerman, Vice Hurley Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Gentry, for being proactive with this resolution. Thank you, council, for hearing this. I volunteer at Perry Worth, and I have to tell you, when I go in that door and I see the SRO there, with our current climate, it makes my heart happy. I feel safer being there. I also have three grandchildren that attend Lebanon Community Schools. You cannot put a price tag on their health and safety, so please, please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any further public comment?
Okay, at this time, I would close the public hearing on Resolution 2018-27. The resolution has already been read by the city attorney. Any further discussion, question, comments from council?
No, sir.
No? At this time, I will entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-27.
I will make a motion that we approve, Resolution 2018-27.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a whole bunch of seconds.
Second, and a third, and a fourth. So all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2018-27, passing unanimously. Thank you very much, council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, again, on behalf of students, important, and staff, as we know are equally important in our school board and myself, I can't tell you how thankful I am, but more importantly, how proud I am, not only to be Superintendent Lebanon, to be a member of a community that demonstrates their commitment to the future through five-year-olds to 20-year-olds, by, by reaching in and supporting this program. So sincerely, I want to extend that thank you. I will be requested to speak to the council at your next meeting, and I will update you on the hiring process. I will also update you on the status of implementation. And again, I want to be very sincere and extend my invitation to each and every one of you to join us at the start of school. We will assign you to kindergarten moms, they're the worst. Kindergartens are great, but I know Mr. Campbell has a special place in his heart for kindergarten mothers. But again, thank you so much for your, for your commitment to our, our students. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
You're welcome.
I'm going to guess I have concern with council, but I think I'm just going to leave old business as old business and move on to claims, unless there's any further discussion or needs.
We adjourn.
No, we need to approve the claims first. So, we'll leave ordinance 2018-09 and 2018-10, and the appropriation request with the prosecutor for the next meeting. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claim.
We have a motion, we pay the claims, there are seconds.